We can, uh, we can do a roll call and find out.
Okay, very good. I see some folks in.
I think we have most everybody.
All right, uh, very good. Well, um, let's, um, let's start this meeting. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, welcome to our town council meeting for October thirteenth. It is a little after seven, it's seven oh three. Um, had a little bit of difficulty and, but I think we're ready to roll. Um, Madam Chair, would you call the roll, please?
William Dietzick.
Present.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinski.
Here.
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Mike, you're here, right?
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
I am present as well. Uh, could we, uh, just stand for the prayer on the pla- flag salute? Madam Chair, would you read the book, please?
Yes. Holy Father, may we consider the people of Southington and always render what is right and just for our citizens. Help us be compassionate and caring for each individual while still seeking what is appropriate for the entire community. Give us wisdom and guidance. Amen.
Amen. Uh, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion, uh, for item two, the minutes of our previous meeting?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this number.
I think Chris Palmieri jumped in before.
Go ahead. I'll second.
Counsel.
Vice versa.
Okay. Um, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Any?
I abstain, Madam Chair.
Abstention? Very good. Okay, thank you so much. Um, so we have it, uh, except for one is an abstention. Thank you so much, everybody. Um, let's, uh, move right along to councilperson's communication. Uh, is Deputy Chief Palmieri, uh, on the meeting?
I am here, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to recognize before we get into other council, oh, there you are, Bill. Uh, before we get into other communications, I would like to, uh, hand the, the meeting over to the Deputy Chief this evening. Many of us have had, uh, uh, folks call us about the increase in, uh, car tampering and car burglaries. And, uh, we even had one person on our council that has firsthand hand information on this because he also, uh, was a victim of, uh, a car theft. So, um, Deputy Chief, could you bring us up to date where we are? We know that there has been a huge spike in, uh, uh, car tamperings and break-ins in cars and all of that. And, uh, it, it's, um, and we know it's, we're not unique in it. I've seen some of the data for other towns that, uh, are near us. But can you let us know the scope of the, of the break-ins, how much they've increased over the last few months? And what we're doing, uh, about it, uh, to safeguard our vehicles and, and everything else. Thank you.
Okay, uh, with permission of the chair, what I'd like to do is just give you an overview, uh, of the numbers and then come in with some challenges and, uh, disadvantages we're facing and then some suggested things on how we can partner with the community to make, uh, this a little bit more effective, if that's okay.
Yes, of course, Chief. Go ahead.
So, looking at our, our car thefts, um, between year-to-date, 2020, we've had sixty-eight compared to forty-one all of calendar year 2019 for a sixty-five percent increase. Our vehicle burglaries, right now, year-to-date, sit at three hundred and three, uh, versus, uh, a total of twenty nineteen of a hundred and fourteen, which is a hundred and sixty-five percent increase. Um, to give you some idea of an area of town of where they're happening, um, our southern area, I'll refer to if we take Old Turnpike Road, and go south to Merton Waterbury Road and go east and west to our town borders, um, a hundred and twenty-seven vehicle burglaries, uh, which equals to forty-two percent of the three oh three have occurred in that area, where twenty-seven percent of our stolen vehicles, which represents forty percent of the sixty-eight, have occurred in the south area town. We moved to the north area town and I'll refer to Flanders Street going north to Plaineville Town Line and then going east and west to our town borders. Um, vehicle thefts are at seventy-five, which accounts for twenty-five percent, or vehicle burglaries are at seventy-five, which accounts for twenty-five percent. And stolen vehicles are at twenty-three, which account for thirty-four percent. The central part of our town, which I'll use for a boundary, is Flanders Street, south to Old Turnpike Road, stop or they go out to our, our boundaries on the east and west side. A hundred and one vehicles, um, have been broken into, which accounts, uh, for thirty-three percent. And eighteen stolen motor vehicles, which equates out to twenty-six percent of the sixty-eight. When we look at the vehicle burglaries and the total of three hundred and three, we break them down, there was a hundred and seventy-five of the three hundred and three burglaries had the vehicle entered and items were taken. A hundred and seventeen of those three hundred and three incidents had the vehicle entered, rummaged through with no items taken. And eleven, uh, incidents where they tried to enter the vehicle, but enter, entry wasn't gained, uh, so it was an attempt. So, that's kind of the makeup of that number of three hundred and three. When we look at these vehicles, between ninety-five and ninety-eight percent of the time, these vehicles were unlocked or accessible. And to kind of bring that into context, um, vehicles left unlocked with keys inside during the overnight hours, vehicles left running at whether it be a convenience store or gas station or, or in their yard at home, um, garage doors being left open with vehicles accessible with keys inside it. Uh, we also had some cases where garage door openers were left in a vehicle out in the yard, which was open, they opened up the garage door and they were able to access the vehicle that was in the garage. So that's kind of an overview of the vehicle burglaries and, and the car thefts. Uh, when we talk about our, our disadvantages or our challenges, um, a lot of it has to do with, uh, some, as far as we're concerned, the lack of consequences. Um, this started in two thousand and seven, uh, when there was legislative action to raise the juvenile age, um, to include sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. Then in April of twenty eighteen, we had the closing of the Connecticut Juvenile, uh, Training School in Middletown, which that housed juvenile offenders, but it gave them, uh, a road to get better. They would move around, um, the different, different areas on the campus and they were trying, it was similar to a diversion, uh, program. When they closed that, there was no real plan, so now we're putting juveniles into the pre, pre-trial detention centers, which were never intended to meet the needs of the juveniles. Um, so although, you know, diversion is a part of it, there also has to be consequences. We've also seen policy restrictions being put on us, um, that we have to follow. Um, and all this stuff is well publicized with social media and honestly, the juveniles that are involved in this and the people that are committing the crimes, they're, they're, they act with reckless disregard for the safety of themselves and others. Um, so those are some of our challenges. And also, one of our challenges too is that it's a positive and a negative. We all talk about how Southington is, is, uh, accessible to all the highways. And if you look at the way our town is designed, there's also many ways to get to eighty-four and six ninety-one. So, if I'm up the north end of town, I got access to the highways. If I'm in the south end of town, I got access to the highways. If I'm in the center of town, I still can access different highways. So that creates some challenges, um, as far as how the, the town is situated. So some of the strategies we've been, been utilizing, uh, we continue to review data for current trends. We use unmarked vehicle patrols. Um, we interface with other agencies to get information. And this is not a just a Southington problem. This problem is, is statewide. Um, we've increased our mobile patrols, uh, which in some respects has taken away our ability to do directed patrols. Um, we're using forensic countermeasures, um, to try and identify the, uh, subjects that are using it. We're also utilizing, um, video footage, um, that we get from the, uh, from the neighbors. So as far as how can the community help us, um, you know, we hear the old saying, see something, say something. That still goes true. Uh, if they, if, nobody knows their neighborhood better than the people that live in it. So if they see something, even if it's something little, call us, let us know, we'll bring resources into that area. One of the most important things is to lock your vehicles. Um, if we look at the statistics, we're, and it's high towards that ninety percent, eight percent. And, and you see it on the videos, these kids are coming in, they're trying to lock, if they didn't get it, if they can't get in, they're leaving. So, um, and I know, you know, some people may say, well, you know, I shouldn't have to lock my cars, they shouldn't be doing this. You know, I agree with this. This is like a discussion I have with my dad all the time, dad, lock your door when you're taking a nap. And, well, that, this is Southington and, and the community has changed. So, we, we need to, to help ourselves by locking our vehicles. Um, it's still a great place to live, but we have to, we have to take certain countermeasures that we can control. Um, but another thing is don't approach the subjects. We've had a couple instances where, uh, the complaints believe that the subject brandished a firearm. Uh, so again, if you see something, say something, but let us respond and let us handle it. Um, as far as community help, uh, we're also, you may have seen, we're starting a social media campaign. Well, we're every night around eight-thirty at night or so, we're going to send out a reminder to the community about locking your vehicles. Um, we're also working on getting a video platform, uh, through one of the phone, uh, doorbell phone companies where civilians can actually upload video to help us do, uh, investigations. So, that is, uh, most of my presentation. I'll gladly answer any questions.
Sounds kind of frustrating, Chief.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's frustrating and, uh, you know, we're doing, we're doing the best we can. I mean, and, and it's, it's something that's happening all over, um, you know, the state. And the juvenile justice system is in a state of flux where, you know, they're talking about diversion, but with no consequences. I mean, we're not going to arrest our way out of this. Arresting is not always the answer, but you can't have programs that don't have real consequences. And, and this is some of the stuff we're facing now.
It sounds like a good challenge for our legislators, uh, to look at this situation a little more clearly. I remember in two thousand and seven, when, uh, the change in the, uh, in the juvenile justice system started to occur. It's gotten much worse since then. So, I appreciate your time. I'd like to open it up to the members of the council. Does anyone have, uh, a question for Deputy Chief? Paul, do you have something?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I had just a couple of questions. I'm not very familiar. Uh, first of all, Deputy Chief, thanks for the, uh, the stats and the updates. And, you know, we continue to stand by our police department. We know that, uh, Southington Police Department is the best, uh, in the state, so thank you. Um, I, I'm interested to know about neighborhood watches. I, I've heard a lot about neighborhood watches. And one of the questions I have is, are those, um, in partnership with the police department or are they wholly done by citizens, uh, you know, in, in a specific neighborhood? Can you talk a little bit about that?
We, we have done neighborhood watches. Um, they've kind of gone, um, by the wayside now. But if a community wants to get a neighborhood watch together, um, we would, we would gladly sit down and assist them in doing that. Um, I think with technology and everything else, people more, uh, can get the information right away. But, uh, you know, neighborhood watches, we would be open to, um, you know, getting involved in those again. Um, it's not a big cost as far as putting something together. Um, so if there are people out there that want to start a neighborhood watch, they could reach out to me and we could point them in the right direction.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that the neighborhood watch, uh, chief is, is, is more about keeping your eyes open in the neighborhood and being maybe quick to respond to the, you know, report to the police department when they see something, maybe more real-time, right?
Exactly. We're not looking for neighborhood watches, not like people getting involved to stop something. If we can get people, you know, just to call us, and sometimes we'll hear people like, well, I'm not sure I should call. If you have, have a concern, call us, let us, let us look at it and decide which way we want to go. But it is, it's more about being aware of your surroundings and reporting it.
And if I, I have, thank you, Chief. I have two, two more, two more items. The first was, um, is it possible or do you think it is, it is, um, beneficial? I heard you say a lot about, um, you know, it's a blessing and a curse, right, that we live, um, we live with great highway access. Um, you know, that's great for all of us, you know, when we're commuting, of course, but it's a, it's a curse when, you know, somebody steals a vehicle and wants to get away quickly. You know, is it possible to, uh, to staff, um, you know, during the times when, you know, folks are writing reports, uh, you know, staff patrol cars closer to the, uh, the on-ramp so that we can, um, you know, possibly have the chance of seeing somebody come on or off, uh, off a ramp that might be suspect that, you know, two or three in the morning or somebody calls something in that we might see them coming by?
Our officers do post in those areas, that's part of the mobile patrol.
Okay.
But again, it's such a vast area, so we kind of look at the data and shift to where we have to go. Um, but, you know, again, we can re, we can relook at the deployment. Uh, but again, the town is big and we only have a certain number of units that we can, uh, we can deploy. Um, so that's why we rely on other agencies and hot sheets and different things like that. Uh, we have a couple license plate readers out there that are helpful. Um, that from a technology perspective might help us. Where these, these are, uh, license plate readers that just, as a car goes by, it reads the license plate. So, if a car stolen out of Hartford, it's on the hot sheet, the officer would get a notification and then they would turn around and say, okay, the car's wanted or something from that respect. And we could, um, you know, we could address it that way. So we currently have two, um, that we utilize and deploy regularly.
Um, that's great. Okay, and then my last item is, uh, you know, you really resonated with me, um, being the person who's had the personal experience, uh, you know, with this in the last few months. I, I learned a lot about the juvenile, uh, comment that you made earlier and, and that they've raised the age so that, you know, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are, are considered juveniles for these. And so, my understanding is we're not prosecuting. I, I also, you know, might have heard a rumor or a comment that, um, you know, that, that either we're discouraged or not allowed to chase a vehicle that's, that's broken into or stolen. Um, I'd be interested to, to get some follow-up information. If you have specific, um, laws, Connecticut laws that you think are possibly, you know, creating some negative impact on communities like ours, I would definitely be interested in, in having a reference for what those are specifically in a follow-up, uh, communication. And I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but, um, I've heard a lot of these similar comments about the juvenile, um, not prosecuting, you know, folks who are sixteen and seventeen years old. And a lot of times, you know, we're seeing that it's that age group because they, you know, kind of are in the safe zone, um, that is, you know, carrying these out. And, um, so I'd be interested in, in getting some follow-up on that. And if the council is, uh, is, is open to it, I'd like to have some of our legislators attend a future meeting. Um, I'm sure, you know, Southington is not alone. This is a widespread issue I've seen on the news. And I'd like to start to ask our legislators to address this issue, um, with some proposals at the state.
Yeah, we can definitely get you some information because again, I think, when you, when you talk about the juvenile justice system, you'll have people that will say, okay, well, all you want to do is throw people in jail and that's not it at all. Um, you know, there's times where, uh, we honestly don't believe extreme on either end doesn't solve anything. It's more meeting in the middle. But if you have a diversion program that has no consequences, um, you know, what do you do? You know, we got to find a way, some way to get together and figure out, you know, how do we try and give the juvenile the tools they need to be successful? But eventually, if they're not responding to these tools, then we have to have some type of consequences. So, um, I would, uh, be more than happy to have that conversation with our legislators. Um, you know, and again, you talk about the pursuits of a vehicle, you know, we, the pursuits have been limited with a stolen vehicle. But then you also have to weigh the need is, we're pursuing for, and I know it's someone's car, but we're pursuing for a property crime. God forbid something happens to an innocent person or the officer. So, there's the quandary that you have. But I think we have to have the conversation and be able to say, hey, look, you know, maybe extreme arrest, everybody isn't the answer, but it also isn't telling everybody, do whatever you want and making it an open book because this is what we have right now. These juveniles are going into and they'll tell our officers, call my mother and father if you catch me, what's going to happen? And, and they're true. So, I, I would love to have that conversation, uh, with the legislators if we could, if we could make that happen.
That's great. And please, please include me in that in the future. If, uh, I would be very interested in, uh, joining you in that discussion. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for the chief?
Madam Chair, uh, Mike Del Santo.
Oh, Michael, yes.
Mike Del Santo. Hi, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So I just want to make a quick comment. I want to thank, uh, just echo some of the sentiments Mr. Chaplinski shared as well. I want to thank, uh, Southington Police, uh, the men and women in blue, uh, that are out there doing all they can to try to prevent these things from happening. Um, it's just disheartening to know that we are living in a place now where you have to pull into your garage and take your keys and your garage door openers with you up inside your house. So it's disheartening to know, um, you know, I would like to see our legislators, uh, more involved in this, try to come up with some answers and how to, uh, prevent this from happening in the future. But I do want, I do appreciate the work that the Southington Police Department is doing. And, um, you know, he said it fast, if you see something, uh, say something, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, the crimes that are, that we're seeing, you see it on the news, you see it in some of the video footage from personal cameras in people's houses. It's, the majority of these are young people. They're looking for change, they're looking for anything of value in your car. So lock your doors, um, you know, don't leave things out, uh, and heed the warnings from the, uh, from the Southington Police Department and hopefully you can try to curb this in the very near future. But thank you, uh, Deputy Chief, for coming out tonight and giving us that presentation. Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, anybody else? I don't see any member of the council's hands raised. Everybody okay?
Madam Chair, I have one quick question, if you don't mind. This is Bill.
Go ahead, Bill.
Chief, thank you for coming. Um, so I actually was not aware of the statistics he just put forth. Um, so is it fair to say then, and I, I want, I don't see the issue being remedied in the short term, but is it fair to say that, that the Connecticut legislature has changed in policies, a direct cause of what's going on in towns like Southington with an increase in these types of crimes?
If you were to ask me, I would say yes, but I'm sure some people would argue the opposite end of it. Um, again, it's been, I think it's been an extreme to where they've taken the enforcement and consequences completely out of the picture to a certain degree. Um, and now this is what you have. Um, so it, it's, it's a difficult decision, but, you know, not, not making arrests and raising this age and not having consequences or enforcement options is handicapping us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Deputy Chief Palmieri. It's always good to hear you. It always makes us, uh, want to stand with you more and the, the officers that serve under you. Um, you are an inspiration and your department is truly the best in Connecticut. We thank you so much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And, uh, just from a rank and file perspective, our officers, um, you know, they appreciate the support and they're the ones really, um, you know, that go out there and do the, the job day in and day out. I mean, you know, I get to present the numbers, but it's their hard work that makes the, uh, the engine run. So, kudos to, uh, the men and women that are out on the street. Thank you.
Amen to that. Thank you. All right, let's open it up to other council matter communications. Somebody has any, something? Anybody?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Oh, Val, yes, go ahead.
Thank, um, so just a couple of things. I just wanted to, uh, I did want to give a shout-out to the, the Southington Fire Department. Um, on Saturday, um, I happened to be at my office and there were, they went out three times right in a row. Um, I know the Rex Forge was a, a big fire, um, but they were, they were quite busy. And I did speak with Assistant Fire Chief Jimmy Powell, um, you know, just, uh, because we, uh, we just support them so much as well. And, um, you know, I just wanted to say, great job for all the work, no injuries. And, um, it, it was a very busy day for them. And, uh, second, I, I did, I was able to attend, uh, the, uh, What Is Co- What Is Black, What Is Color, um, the second session at, at SOCA. Um, and it was, it was just very, very well-done, excellent, uh, presentation. So, I'd, I'd really encourage anyone who can get to, um, a couple more sessions, uh, the next few Sundays. And then there is artwork being displayed all through the month. So, you know, I would encourage anyone who can get there to, to sign up. They're limiting the numbers, uh, for people to go inside. Um, but it's, uh, it's an excellent, excellent presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Val. Uh, anybody else have any council matter communication? Uh, Chris, did you raise your hand? Chris Palmieri? I mean, Chris, did you hear anything? Chris, I thought I saw you. And Chris Pulis didn't. Um, I have just a, a couple of things I just wanted to mention.
It's Mike Del Santo again, sorry. I do have something.
Okay, Michael, yes.
Sorry, yeah, just a couple of things. I was able, yesterday morning, uh, yesterday was Columbus Day. I was able to attend a brief ceremony in the rain yesterday at the Columbus statue, where the, uh, members of the Sons of Italy Club and the Unico Club and the Knights of Columbus and members from the Calvinist Foundation, uh, came out and they had a very brief ceremony, very nice acknowledging, uh, the day and Italian-American heritage. So I want to commend them for, uh, for the very nice job they did yesterday morning. Um, that's number one. Number two, I did receive, um, an email and a text message this afternoon from a constituent who lives over by, um, Hillcrest. The, uh, the houses that have been, uh, been being put in for the last, I don't know, it's got to be ten years now. Um, it seems as though every time there is a large rain event, these poor neighbors are getting deluged with water. Um, I did reach out to town staff, they did a wonderful job, they were out there right away. Um, but it seems as though we're having these events so seldom now, especially with such a dry, uh, summer. Uh, I really want to exert our efforts into helping these neighbors. Uh, it's not fair to them. Uh, I don't know what we need to do. I did speak with Dave LaValle earlier today. Uh, I'm not blaming town staff, but I do want to stay on top of this. We need to do something to help these neighbors. Uh, it's not fair to them that every time we get more than an inch of rain, their backyards are filled with water and their driveways get washed out. Uh, and the gentleman who called me today, he just put a pool in his backyard and, you know, it was, it's been in for three weeks and the cover's covered in mud, um, from, from the waters from this development. So, um, Mark is aware, Mark Shoda, town manager, is aware of this and, uh, town staff and the Public Works Department is aware of it. But I just, I've got to bring this on the forefront because I, I just, we've got to get ahead of this before the next rain event so these folks, uh, can be taken care of, um, so if it happens again. So, that's it. That's all I wanted to say, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
I, uh, will bet that somebody's going from the staff will be mentioning it a little bit. Thank you. Mark, do you want to do it now or do you want to wait till your report?
Uh, let's do it now because it's fresh in everyone's mind. Um, I, I've been receiving the reports also today. Um, we have, uh, two of the key staff members on our call with us, Rob Phillips and Annette Turnquist. Um, if Rob could just briefly tell us, uh, what are, what the plans are, and I know that there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning. So, Rob, you want to speak first and then Annette, if you have anything to add, you can do that, please.
Sure. Hi, Rob Phillips, Director of Planning. Um, this has obviously been an ongoing issue, uh, over there with the fact it's a, it's a fairly dense development. Uh, this is a lot of overlap with construction activities and exposed areas, uh, which is always a problem. Um, so we're trying to get on top of this for quite some time. We've, they've been in with, uh, wetlands commission recently for a, uh, a, uh, extension of their wetlands approval. And, uh, through that, uh, discussion and decision, they were supposed to, uh, have a engineer, a third party, uh, actually give us, uh, you know, weekly reports or, uh, of the inspections and maintenance over there, the erosion sediment controls. Uh, this particular instance today, I think, had to do with, uh, a very recent, uh, new, new, um, station that went in, in that general vicinity. So obviously it's been disturbed, it's hard to keep that, uh, um, you know, stabilized right away when that, when that work's being done. Having said that, obviously today was a pretty big rain event in a short period of time. I think, uh, one and a half, well, maybe two inches of rain came down, about four or five hours. Uh, so, you know, it, it was kind of an extraordinary event, but either way, we are meeting, uh, or I should say, uh, the, the site contractors meeting with the neighbor, um, uh, tomorrow morning, I think at seven thirty in the morning. And this is obviously something we're going to be working on right away. There, there could be another heavier rain event, more intense rain event come Friday. So, uh, this is something that's going to be in the front burner to try to make sure that this doesn't happen again this weekend. I take any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Rob, for coming out. Appreciate that and always appreciate the follow-up from staff. Um, I, I agree with you, we had a pretty heavy rain today. I, I do think, I, I wouldn't say that it was so extraordinary that it shouldn't have been, uh, able to handle, uh, the runoff that was occurring. I, I would hope that the design would handle a rain like we had today, although there were periods of, of heavy rain. Um, you know, I, I must say, it's, it's disappointing because this, um, this development has been, you know, having multiple complaints. I know I've received three complaints in the last six months where I've gone out there and had to take a look and there's a lot of runoff and silt going and catch bases and, um, you know, going into the wetlands. I've seen a lot of runoff, uh, going into wetlands where there's no silt fencing. And I, the, the whole development needs a, a, a constant review because, um, you know, it's, it's, every time they dig, they put a foundation in, we hear the same thing from, from the, from the developer and that, well, you know, we're, we're doing new site work. You know, at some level, I think they have to put the, they have to put the safeguards in first before they do the site work so that when they do disturb the site work so that when they do disturb the site, uh, you know, that, 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 especially the neighbors and the infrastructure aren't negatively impacted. You know, is there an opportunity for us to, uh, hold back on inspections or hold back on COs so that they can't, um, continue to sell houses until they're compliant on a regular basis?
Uh, that certainly could be one of the tools in our toolbox and that's something that we're going to look at, at tomorrow as well, too. So, um, you know, in the past, there's also the potential, potentially if it's an island-based issue, to issue fines. Um, so we'll, we'll look at everything here. Obviously, you know, um, they've done work, but clearly, and I agree with you, this isn't a hundred years storm event that happened today. Um, but, you know, so at, at some point in time, you know, these death by a thousand cuts needs to be addressed. So we're going to be, we're going to be all in tomorrow on this one.
That's great. I think the neighbors deserve, uh, you know, a, a reprieve from, from some of the, uh, the issues that are being caused from the runoff there. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council matter communication?
Councilman Enna?
Yes.
Just to, just to, uh, continue on this subject, thank you to Councilman Chaplinsky for, for bringing that up and thank you to, to Mr. Phillips for this. But it, it just seems like we're talking about this every couple of times a year. And whether it's the developer's fault or, or maybe whoever's fault it was, we need to get this fixed. We're, we're just talking about this too much. So I, I'm, I'm glad that we're talking about it again and it seems like, um, Mr. Phillips, it, it has a good game plan for the meeting tomorrow. But, I mean, this needs to really be resolved and, and I, I support, you know, all efforts that are necessary, uh, whether it be through planning and zoning or through this, this body, um, to, to really help out that, that area of town.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to just, uh, mention two things. Uh, we lost someone, if you've been around for more than, uh, uh, six months, uh, nearly everybody knows the name of Tony Manning. Tony, uh, was a cartoonist, uh, with, uh, political cartoonist and, and you knew you made it in politics if Tony did a cartoon about you, uh, in the Record Journal. Tony passed away, uh, this past week and we send our condolences out to his family. Um, he was, uh, someone who made such wonderful commentary, uh, through cartoons and, uh, some of them were not funny, if you were the brunt of them. But, uh, uh, we've, uh, we've lost a good friend in Tony Manning and, uh, I did want to mention his name and, uh, just for all of us who, who, uh, served the town through polit- through politics, that, uh, we know him and, uh, he has been a friend to Southington for a whole generation. The other thing I wanted to, and so I hope everyone keeps him, keeps his family and their thoughts and prayers. The other thing I wanted to mention, I had the honor, uh, to be at the Southington Drive-In, uh, yesterday from about eleven o'clock till about two, uh, two, I guess, where we participated in, uh, the Farm to Table, uh, Farm to Families Event. That is a federal program offering free food, uh, to people who are hungry and that is the only stipulation. Uh, yesterday through Janet Mellon and, uh, her many volunteers, there were over thirty-five volunteers, uh, distrib- uh, distributed, uh, fourteen-hundred boxes of food. You might say, oh, that's not possible here in Southington. Well, let me tell you, it is. And, uh, boxes went out to, uh, elderly people, boxes went out to young families, they went out to, uh, single people living on their own, trying to make ends meet. It was so awe-inspiring and I want to just mention that, uh, the person that was able to orchestrate this for Southington was, uh, Curtis Robinson. Many of you know Curtis and, uh, and the Sheila and Curtis Robinson Foundation intervened and Curtis was there yesterday for a short time. Uh, but it was wonderful to see him and I wanted to thank him. I wanted to thank Janet and all of her volunteers. I just, uh, the Southington Police Department were there and, and the Highway Department helped and, uh, so many volunteers were there. Uh, it was just very inspiring. I want to also say that, uh, on the, on October twenty-first and October twenty-eighth, they're going to be doing it again. It'll go from, uh, twelve noon until the boxes are done. And, uh, yesterday they started the program a little bit early. There was a small line that's, that formed about eleven fifteen or so and they started giving out food and they didn't stop until two o'clock. It was absolutely amazing. Uh, prior, uh, Town Councilman Paul Champagne, uh, was the, uh, organizer of the, uh, the plan to distribute the food. It was, it was, it just made you, uh, feel very good that hungry people were getting groceries. So again, uh, October twenty-first and October twenty-eighth, uh, at the Southington Drive-In, uh, it'll start at noon and it'll probably go till all the boxes are done. We don't know how long. So I just wanted to get that on the record as well. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to move on now to the reports of-
Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
Who's that?
This is Paul. I did have one more thing, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, I'm, while we were talking about the, uh, we had, um, Mr. Phillips there, there is one additional follow-up, uh, item. We do have a, a reoccurring complaint and I'm not sure if the town attorney, uh, would be, uh, the right one to get involved at this point. But we do have the Meriden Avenue issue where we have consistent filling going on on Meriden Avenue across from, uh, a construction site. Uh, and, you know, the neighbor, uh, who owns a house across the street contacted me two or three days ago and asked about follow-up on that. And I know we've issued cease and desists. Uh, there's continued filling from across the street coming on site and, uh, the neighbor, uh, indicated that their well water, their water, uh, and on their own property has been affected. So they're, they're losing water pressure in their house. Um, and they feel that it's as, as a result of, uh, the filling and the activity going on on site with the heavy equipment. And, uh, they also said another neighbor was affected because they were filling into the wetlands. So, uh, I, I know that there was an issue, uh, that was, uh, pending there and I, I really would, um, ask for some help there to press that to the next level, which I think may be town attorney at this point to, uh, to take some action.
Okay, thank you. All right, everybody, let's move on. It's, uh, already seven forty. So, um, tell me, uh, I'm sorry, the report of special committees. Um, Dr. Stephanie Urillo, uh, is, uh, going to report on the Plainville-Southington Health District. Dr. Urillo? I know she's here. Stephanie, are you still on, Paul?
Madam Chair, it looks like Dr. Urillo is, um, is logged into the meeting without audio.
I see.
Unless, unless you, hold on, she may be one of the two dial-ups here. Hold on one second. Let me open those two lines. Uh, Dr. Urillo, can you hear us now?
I can, I've always been able to hear. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you can.
You can hear me. Okay, thanks. Sorry, I had it fallen because the audio on my computer was, wasn't good. So I figured my phone would suffice. So thank you. Uh, the Plainville-Southington Regional Health District met in person and with social distancing at Town Council Chambers and Southington Town Hall on the first of October, twenty twenty. The Health District received from the state the allocation for the per capita funding. As you recall, the Health District was able to reduce its per capita rate by ten cents per person in each town and the account balance for the Health District is still fis- financially sound. This grant for the state fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which runs from July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the grant is to be used for staff salaries, fringe benefits and office supplies. The form was filled out, is in compliance and was signed by both Shane Lockwood, Director, and myself as Chair. The Health District, and this is new, also received from the state through the federal government, the epidemiology and laboratory capacity, ELC, enhancing detection cooperative agreement funding application for the enhanced detection, response, surveillance and prevention of COVID nineteen. This runs from the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty, through the seventeenth of November, twenty twenty-two and is allocated for three years. The purpose of this allocation is to enhance laboratory detection surveillance, which is contact tracing, response, informatics and other workforce capacity, to strengthen laboratory testing volume and capacity, coordinate and engage with partners as needed to respond to and prevent COVID nineteen, to prevent and minimize transmission of COVID nineteen, and to conduct health promotion activities associated with the above. At our meeting on the first of October, Ms. Amy Schultz, Chief Sanitarian, and who serves as Acting Director of Health in Shane's absence, has been handling the contact tracing for the Health District and gave a presentation to the board as how the Health District is handling this to mitigate the spread of this disease. Again, the form was filled out, is in compliance and was signed by Shane Lockwood, Director, and myself as Chair. And lastly, uh, as, as part of what we do, um, on the third meeting of the year, I was re-elected Chair for the upcoming year and Sheriff Politus from Plainville was elected Vice Chair. Our next meeting is the third of December, twenty twenty. And thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Urillo? We thank you, Dr. Urillo, Stephanie. It was a complete report. We appreciate your time and effort, uh, serving. So thank you, uh, Stephanie.
Thank you. Anytime.
Thank you. Good. Uh, item B, the Sewer Department. I believe Attorney Deezick is going to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, um, two items. So we're about approximately eighty percent, eighty-six percent completed with the sewer plant. Um, and we've also successfully decommissioned the Brad, uh, Blatchley Pump, uh, pump station. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Attorney Deezick? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Public Works, Mike Del Santo?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We met on the seventh of October. Chief Daley, uh, discussed, uh, that they put some no parking signs on one side of Triano Drive to assist some of the, um, some of the businesses in that area that has some larger trucks so they can navigate through the street a little, a little easier. Uh, I want to thank, um, Councilman Chaplinsky for bringing that to our attention. So he was instrumental in, in getting that going. Thanks, Paul. Uh, Volky Waste Transfer Station, uh, Annette Turnquist, uh, um, spoke about the scanner software company. She's in, uh, development talks with them, uh, to see how we can, uh, they're doing analysis to see how we could better check people in. Uh, one of the things that came out of it was that, uh, going forward, there's now going to be an alert when folks are scanning, uh, people in from the public, uh, if they come more than one time. Obviously, if you are a resident in town, you can go as many times as you want. But if you are a commercial business, using the transfer station, you're allowed, you're only allowed to use it one time, uh, per, per day, uh, on the Saturdays. So that, uh, that software will help. Um, we did get to a way to try to reverse the entrance and exit of the transfer station to try to alleviate so many cars coming onto the road. And unfortunately, logistically, it just wasn't able to be done. But Annette and Gabe did come up with another idea to possibly, uh, add a couple of additional lanes at the entrance once inside the property, which, uh, could, could stack up a bunch more cars to try to alleviate the amount of cars that are, that are backing up onto Old Turnpike Road. It's not a huge issue. It's always after a large storm, uh, when brush is a problem. Or, you know, once we start going every other week, there could be an issue as well. So the idea here is to try to give the folks on Old Turnpike Road, uh, a little bit of a break to try to get some of the cars off the road and into the site. So, and that is working hard on that. We thank her for that and her staff. Sorry.
That's not in place yet, right, Mike? Michael?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. It's not. No, we're working on it. We're working on the logistics and we'll report back. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll come up with a plan, uh, that works for everyone involved. Okay. Uh, highways and parks, the road restoration for two thousand twenty is complete. Uh, there was, uh, another day or two of, um, of crack sealing that needed to be done. I'm not sure if that's getting done this week, but after that, we're done for the year. Um, the Memorial Park concession stand is just about finished. The, uh, Annette was doing a walkthrough last Friday. Um, the playground on Memorial Park will be done soon. They're hoping for a dedic- dedication and opening, uh, either late October or early November. Uh, the park's master plan, the Fountain at Rec Park is still on order. It's coming soon. Uh, there's a bigger fountain coming that should help alleviate some of the algae that's happening at the, uh, pond there. And the walkway repairs around the pond are just about done as well. And other than that, there is some, some brush work being done and then, then they'll pack it up and reconvene in the spring to work on some of the other projects. Um, they did install a sidewalk that goes to the, um, the plate, the playground at Rec Park. Uh, looks wonderful, uh, which will help folks get access, uh, have access to the playground easier. And, um, later on in the meeting, we're going to talk about leaves and snow, but the first leaf pickup is going to be on, uh, November second. And the schedule is on the website, the Southington website now. So you can go and find out, you can actually look up your street and find out exactly what zone you're in and have your leaves out in the street, ready to go. And we talked about bids. Uh, we're going to talk about that later in the meeting, so I don't want to bore folks twice about that. But, uh, that'll be coming up later on in the meeting. And we talked about snow. Uh, there are variations of snow removal and snow, um, clearing of school walkways and actual plowing. So, um, there were lots of bids that came in for that. We'll talk about that later on in the meeting as well. Uh, engineering, there were the three items that I keep bringing up and unfortunately the, the DOT is kind of holding us up. So, uh, a lot of these projects, uh, will happen. Uh, it's the, the plant safety improvement, the trail to Lazy Lane and the Marion Ave Bridge and the Spring Street Bridge are all kind of on hold and hoping to go out to bid, uh, either late December or after the first of the year. Um, and I do have to report that this is also on the highway parks page, uh, the highway page on the Southington website, that there is going to be a hazardous waste drop-off in the town of Bristol on November seventh from nine to one at ninety-five Vincent Kelly Road. So if you forgot that, you can go on the Southington website and find out if people have old paint or oil they need to bring. Uh, they can do that in Bristol and we are, fingers crossed, we were supposed to have one this year in Southington, but it fell apart after the pandemic. Uh, so hopefully next spring, we'll try to get one here in Southington. Any questions?
I have a question for Councilman Del Santo. Clar- clarification.
Right ahead.
The, um, hazardous waste collection, we, we revised our, our process for that probably three or four years ago. But I just want to, uh, reiterate for the residents that the, the event in Bristol is still free for the Southington residents. And then when we have it in Southington at a date or to be in, determined in the future, that will be free for residents of Bristol. So there's a few different towns in the area that are kind of working together. So, um, that, that is-
Good point, Mr. Lombardi. Thank you for clarifying that.
For the residents to be aware of.
That's right. That's right.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. A lot of stuff-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, thank you. Uh, right now, let's go to the Town Manager and his report and communication. Mark?
Meeting, everyone. Uh, as Mr. Del Santo just touched upon, we have, uh, four bids that need to be acted on tonight. Uh, we first talk about the first, uh, as Mr. Del Santo also stated that the leaf season is coming on very quickly. Uh, we're going to be starting the beginning of, uh, next month. Uh, the bids for, uh, fall leaf pickup for the backhaul and the temporary labor. Uh, for those of you who've gone through this many times, you understand how we do this. We go out to the bids. Uh, what we do is we, we approve of all the bidders and then we use them in reverse order, uh, the least amount to the greatest amount. Um, Mrs. Turnquist, our Public Works Director, has stated, uh, in her narrative that in several cases, uh, Southington contractors have chose to use the preferred bidder ordinance and, uh, as you can see how the lineup works. So, uh, we're asking for, uh, two separate approvals for A and B, uh, for leaf pickup. Happy to answer any questions. And I see Mrs. Turnquist is on here too, so she can answer questions if you have any.
Yes, she is. Anyone have any questions about the leaf pickup?
I just have one clarification for the Town Manager, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
What was the, uh, so the, the bids were opened on September thirtieth. What, when did the, uh, bids, when were they opened up to the?
Start again?
When were the bids opened up? Not opened up, when were they released? How, like, how many weeks or months was it out?
Do you know when you posted them? I know when we opened them, but do you know when you posted them, Annette?
Um, I don't know the exact date, but I believe they had about a month to respond. I think it was early September.
Okay, that's, that's pretty standard for the, the way we do it is about a month.
Yep.
Yes.
Three, three, three to four weeks, that's correct.
Thank you. I, I think, I just think that maybe going forward in the memo, it would be good for the public to see how long, you know, people had a chance to respond to them.
Sure.
But, thank you.
Okay. The, uh, the next two bids also go together and this is, we're not quite ready for the season, but, uh, we do need to do the bids for them and that's for the snow removal. The first one is school access walks and the other one is snow plowing and snow removal. Uh, that being said, they work the same way. We take all the contractors, we approve of all of them and then we work them in reverse order. Obviously, we take the, uh, uh, the least amount to the greatest amount. Um, I know Annette can correct me if I'm wrong, but we plan on using the vast majority of both the leaf, uh, contractors and the snow contractors. And if it's a really bad, uh, snowstorm, we're going to be using all of the snow contractors. So, uh, with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions or the Public Works Director can answer the questions for you.
Any questions, anyone?
Uh, Madam Chair, just a, just a- Madam Chair, just a, just a reminder that we do have executive session tonight, and there will be no action out of executive session.
Very good. Uh, were you going to mention our pamphlet, Mark?
I, I will. Uh, thanks to, uh, thanks to our Public Works Division. The Director and I worked on a pamphlet, uh, which is, uh, for the November referendum. I know that I've, uh, put some in your packets, and, uh, please, if you need them to hand out to any, uh, restaurants or other businesses in town, uh, it is on the town website, and it's in all the town buildings where the, uh, the people do go. But it's a very good explanation on why the administration believes, uh, the public, um, uh, would be very beneficial for the public to support the referendum. We do believe that, uh, we put forth to the council and to the public what our future road program is. Uh, we've invested money in a, in a, in a computerized program, and we hope the public, uh, does support the fact that we'll be asking for $10 million to be spent for the improvement of our roads. And I, uh, would, happy to tell you that that was a unanimous recommendation from all council members, all zoning and zoning members, and all members of the Board of Finance, and I hope the public also supports us.
People are very interested. I know that, uh, it was placed at, uh, one of the, the breakfast places that, uh, I frequent. And they're almost all gone, so that's a good sign.
I have, I have more in my office, Madam Chair.
Oh, good, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Attorney DePaolo.
I just wanted to mention, I just did want to thank Mark and Annette for putting this together. I did have a few people had contacted me regarding the referendum. I was able to point them to the website, you know, to look at the, the brochure. A couple of them were really impressed with the, the Street Logic, um, software. So, um, I, I think it's a great job, and it really puts it into language that we can all understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney DePaolo. The, uh, it's unfortunate because normally, as most of you know, during these referendums, I like to go to all the service groups and do a presentation. We're not able to do that this year, so we had to do a little bit different. Uh, and there will be some letters to the editors going out, uh, in the next couple of days. And feel free to any council member who wants to write a letter to the editor. I'm not sure how many they'll publish, but I know the Director and I have a joint letter going out, I believe, this week or early next week.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, moving along to Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there's two items on my report today that require action by the council. They both deal with 553 Lanning Street. Um, you may know it as Greenleaf Brothers Stables. On the first is a purchase contract for approximately two acres of land. That's an outright purchase, and that purchase, uh, area of two acres connects to existing open space that's owned by the town right now. And the second item is development rights purchase, uh, for just under 14 acres of farmland. And that's also known as 553 Lanning Street. And just for procedural matters here, just for the public, as well as I believe the council's very familiar with, since we had a couple of these already, uh, we need to refer these under Connecticut General Statute 824 to the planning and zoning, um, tonight for their consideration to make sure that it, uh, coincides with, uh, the plans and conservation of the town.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Anything else?
Nothing else right now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move right on to public communication. Uh, this is where we invite any member of the public, uh, to feel free to, uh, speak for five minutes. And, uh, we ask you, uh, we will be, uh, uh, very, uh, respectful to you, and we would ask that you do the same for, uh, the members of the council and the staff. So i- if there's anybody, Paul, what we'll do is anybody who's on the computer that would like to speak will go first. And then what we'll do is we'll open up the phones, and you will kind of orchestrate that. Is that correct, Paul?
It sounds great, Madam Chair. If there's anybody who is on the computer who would like to unmute themselves, now would be a good time to unmute yourself. If you're having a problem unmuting yourself and you're on your computer, you can type in the chat function and just ask for some help to be unmuted, and I'll be happy to do that. Anybody that's on the computer first, and we'll open the phone lines after the computer attendees.
Anybody?
Okay, Madam Chair, I hear none. I'm going to open the phone line. There's one person, uh, it looks like there's, yeah, one person who's called in. So I have, I've opened the telephone lines. So for the person who's called in, is there anybody who would like to speak during public communications now? Madam Chair, I hear none, so I'll close the line.
So we have no one wanting to speak during public communication. That's your privilege. And, um, thank you, everybody, for listening tonight, even though you didn't speak. Uh, all right, I'm going to move on. Old Business, Action A, uh, Action on Leaf Pickup, Vac All Rental Bids. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the leaf collection and vac all bids.
I'll second that, Madam Chair, Del Santo.
Del Santo seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none, I see that it passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Item B, Action on the Fall Leaf Pickup, Temporary Labor Bids. May I have a motion?
So moved, as presented by the Town, uh, Town Managers.
And, and Chris seconded it. Um, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Item C, Action on the Snow Removal, uh, School Access Walks Bid. May I have a motion? Sorry?
Well, move, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. Uh, Val, you, uh, you made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, absolutely, Chris. For the school walks, you better. I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Saying aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, that, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Action on Snow Plowing and Snow Removal of Town Streets and Parking Lot Bids. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is that you, Chris Pulis?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Chris Pulis made, uh, the motion and-
Second, Madam Chair, Del Santo.
Del Santo seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, Item E, the Action on the 824 Referral Purchase of 553, uh, Lanning Street. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to, Madam Chair.
I'll second, Madam Chair. This is Paul.
And Paul seconded. Seconding it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Madam Chair, should we do a discussion on that first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. So, uh, I, I, let's move to discussion.
I'll make-
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just, um, thank you to Attorney Taylor for giving the legal background of it, but I would also ask just a brief summary from maybe the members of the Open Space Committee, to make a quick comment on both of these. Both the purchase and the, uh, development rights, because this did go through open space. So I think it would be prudent to just give a brief description there.
That would be fine. We have two members, I think, here. Space and Chris Connera, you're also on open space, right?
Sure. Chris, would you like me to, uh, start, and you can add in?
Start, yeah.
Yeah. I, yes, Paul, please.
So, uh, thanks, uh, Tom, for starting the dialogue. I'm happy to provide some more details. You know, I think it's important, uh, to just delineate a few things. I think there's a few major factors here that we, that we looked at when we were, um, you know, talking with, uh, talking about this parcel. The two major ones are, first of all, preserving open space and the fact that the, uh, parcel, the two acre parcel that we're purchasing is, uh, connected to and immediately adjacent to the Graski, uh, property, the Karaski Open Space Parcel, which a lot of people use. Um, you know, we saw that the, uh, you know, our first priority here is to try to preserve the open space. So we look for, um, uh, you know, components of the land that were underutilized, uh, by the farm itself, and, uh, you know, work with the owner to, uh, do an outright purchase for those two acres. The remaining 14 acres, um, you know, we're working to preserve farm, farming. And in our plan of conservation and development, you know, there's, uh, um, you know, specific, uh, delineations or callouts for us to continue to work toward preserving farms. Farming was critical to, uh, you know, to Connecticut's, um, uh, growth in the past. And, you know, over the decades, we've lost some of the farming, and that includes Southington. And so preserving the farmland, including the horse farm here, um, is really important. The third thing is preventing housing. And, you know, we heard a lot from, uh, from our residents in the years past that, um, you know, that they would like to not see, um, residential development where it's possible to preserve land. And so, you know, by preserving the open space, by preserving the farmland, uh, by virtue of doing that, we're also preventing, uh, residential development in the area and, um, doing this in a way that's responsible, um, to our taxpayer.
Thank you. Councilman Paul?
I just wanted to ask, Chris, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I, no, but, but as far as the development rights, um, can I just ask Jeremy to highlight? I mean, I have the whole document here, but can I have Jeremy just give us an executive summary of the restrictions related to the development rights and what can and cannot be done on that property?
Sure, of course. Jeremy, can you do that for us?
Sure, no problem, Madam Chair. Um, Councilor Paul Mary, what we have in this, uh, development, uh, rights purchase is that the green leaves are basically going to continue on with, with their farming. Um, they're going to maintain this farm. They can't, uh, develop this property. They can't make it into a subdivision, so we're going to preserve that this is going to keep being farmland. They, to get in some, a little bit more detail, they do have, uh, existing building on the property right now. We are granting them, um, the rights to keep that piece of property and expand it into a small little portion, as basically a homestead, little reservation there, that if they do want to expand, um, up to 3,300 square feet, they can do that. Or I believe, I misspoke. I think it's 3,700 square feet. So it was a give and take. I believe the Greenleafs are happy to, uh, make sure this property is not developed, but also be able to keep and reside on this property if they, if they choose to in the future.
And if I can just clarify on that, and that, thank you, Jeremy, that's, that's exactly what I was looking for, because, uh, there, they, the expansion is limited to the square footage that you mentioned. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure because, um, I, I, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't other structures on the property that maybe were used for other purposes besides, you know, the, you know, residence, as you mentioned. But I think you covered it.
If I may, if I may, Attorney Taylor, so, you know, basically, we were trying to respect the fact that they have a house, a homestead there today. They're allowed to keep one homestead, and what we did was we worked with them to create an envelope that said, this is the area, you know, kind of by the roadside. Here's an envelope that, you know, you have to keep that house in. So, you know, you can't move it to the back of the property, you know, closer to the open space, et cetera, et cetera, where a lot of the, the horse farmers used. And, you know, any, anything else, um, you know, there, there won't be any other homes put on the property so that, um, we will be preventing additional residential development on the, on the, uh, property.
Madam Chair, I have just one more comment to make. Uh, clarification for the public. The purchase of the development rights does not remove this property from the tax rule. So the town will still be collecting, uh, property taxes from this parcel. I, I think that's important to point out as well to the public. And that's all I have for questions and comments on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, having, uh, opened this up for discussion, anybody else have anything to say about it? Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm going to call the motion. All those in favor of, uh, pushing the 824 referendum purchase of, uh, Lanning Street signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any, are there any votes opposed to the movement of this property? Hearing none, I'll accept it as a unanimous, uh, uh, vote, and thank you so much, everybody. Open space. Um, we're moving right on to Item F, which also is an 824 referral of development rights. So the first one was for the purchase of those two acres. This is for the development rights of that same piece of property. May I have, um, a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve. Really?
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Second, Matt Del Santo.
And Valerie, you're going to second, and thank you very much. Uh, any discussion on the development rights? Anything further? So hearing none, uh, let's move the motion. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition to this motion? I see it as unanimous, and, uh, it is unanimous to vote in favor, uh, for the 824, for the referral for development rights. Uh, thank you, everybody. That was, uh, uh, very good. Uh, let's move on to new business for the tax refunds. Attorney DePaolo, do you have them?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we accept or approve the tax refunds that are outlined in our packet tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All those-
I'll second.
This is Bill.
Okay, Bill, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I hear none, so therefore the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Attorney DePaolo. Very good. Uh, Item B, appointments. Um, uh, I need, uh, uh, a name. Uh, Jim Bose has served very faithfully. And Chris, did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to renominate, um, uh, Jim Bose for the position. Madam Chair, I want to thank you for that. We appreciate it. I think he's done a great job as well.
And I'll second that, please, Madam Chair.
You're very, you're very strongly in favor of Jim Bose, uh, Tom. So, yes, thank you. So, um, uh, I had a chance to speak to Jim, uh, today, and, uh, he would be with us, but he's at his own town council meeting, and so, uh, he couldn't be with us. But he thanked us, uh, very, uh, much for, uh, giving him this opportunity. So, all those in favor of Jim Bose for that position, could you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, the second, uh, appointment is the Housing Authority, and it's an appointment from the Town Manager, uh, Mr. Shota.
Madam Chair, I've been given the name of Sharon O'Brien for renomination, uh, for a five-year term expiring October 2025. She is hereby appointed.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Well, everybody, we've had a, a great meeting so far, but we are going to move now into executive session. We're going to borrow the press and the public, but we will be inviting our town attorney, our town manager, and the members of the council, and I think that's it. Is that correct?
Yep.
I think that's it. Uh, have a motion, please.
And Madam Chair, just as a point of order, I'm going to close this meeting. Is that correct? Because we're not coming back. There's no action. Everybody, everybody who is coming into executive session should use the other meeting link.
That's, that's great. And, um, hopefully, uh, we'll all see each other on the other side. All those in favor?
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Tom. Okay. All those in favor? I'm sorry I jumped the gun. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, everybody, we'll see each other on the other side.
Hi, everyone.
Aye.
Good night, public. Take care.